And that's the Seisland family who is here to support their dad. My kids, great to have you tonight.
They wanted to see me live on sort of TV.
Yeah, it's for a change. Well, we know how much time your dad spends working for the city. We certainly appreciate that. Are we good?
Yeah, we're all good.
Okay, so it appears there's nobody who would like to be here as part of this first public comment. All right, so closing that, we now move into approval of the regular agenda. I would ask council that we remind ourselves, because I believe the public agenda did include the purchase agreement for the parking lot at 1502-CO-Curtille, but just for your own edification, that will be item number seven under new business. And then also, I would ask that we consider reversing items 10 and 11 to move council comment to follow public comment rather than to precede it.
Motion to amend.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Viner. Seconded by Caulfield, any further discussion? Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Holer.
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Caulfield.
Yep.
Councilmember Viner.
Yes.
Councilmember Dreever.
Yes.
Councilmember Motters. Mayor Hodges. Yes, motion carries. We do have an agenda amended as noted, moving into unfinished business. You will note we have none, which takes us to new business and the first item being the appointment of the mayor Protem. Counsel, I'd like to thank you all for your input on this decision. I think rather than get the motion on the table first, as we normally do, I would like to make a few comments as to the background to this choice. I have taken this decision very seriously, and my grounding thought in addition to the four-way task that we often talk about was how to best achieve our goals. And just for the benefit of the public, and maybe watching what charter does require, that the meeting immediately following an election requires that we appoint a mayor Protem, so that is what we're discussing now. I do believe that rotating leadership allows us all, it's a healthy strategy that allows us all to grow, to contribute, to bring fresh ideas, and to build bridges with all segments of the community. And my goal is to strengthen our ability to have impact and to ensure that the entire council is engaged and to foster and more importantly deepen the collaboration that we have with our community. Mr. Caulfield has done an outstanding job over the last four years and will continue to, and in fact, Tom, I'm working on strategies to take your impact even to the next level. And tonight, I want to broaden that participation and introduce another strong vote to leadership. It's my hope that this step I'm proposing of strengthening the connected tissue, we know is crucial, will build social capital, and will serve as a signal to the community that we are serious, a serious and professional and well-oiled team that is absolutely committed to working closely together. There is no us versus them. There are no factions or divides. We are simply a bench of strong and committed residents seeking only to lead with impact and to demonstrate very clearly to the community with every decision we make, including this one, that long-term sustainable outcomes are what we strive for and what we will achieve through collaboration. We've come a long way, team, with each of you helping to move us forward, and this decision is yet another punctuation point on our journey to a highly functioning community. And in fact, I believe it's the mortar that will make this team an undeniable force. Everyone on this council has a vital role to play in shaping our success. And tonight, councilmember Dreever, I'm pleased to further your consideration by this body as the next mayor Protem of Gross Point Park. You're well-equipped, you bring intellect to the table, you've worked hard, you've shown professionalism, you have a mission-minded mindset, you've been a bridge, you've advanced strong narratives and served to educate the community as a result. You've shown maturity, passion, and courage and heart in your two years with us. With that, council, I bring to you councilmember Dreever as my recommendation to serve as Gross Point Park's next mayor Protem. And with that, I would ask for a motion, and then we can even...
Motion to approve.
Moved by McMillan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Viner, is there any discussion? With that, clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Holer.
Absolutely. Sorry, yes, yeah.
Councilmember Gleason.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Caulfield. Councilmember Dreever. Steve.
No, it's a yes if you're asking, but I don't think you...
I don't think you can, the charter does not allow you not to vote, and if there is a conflict, you have to recuse that, and we have to allow that person not to vote, I believe. So I think he, we'll let the city attorney determine if he can...
We have a right to...
Typically, you're allowed to vote. You're allowed to vote.
Yes, good. And yes, I'd like to do it. I'm honored, and I've got big shoes to fill. I look forward to it.
Councilmember Peter.
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges. Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Dreever and Mr. Caulfield again. You've truly been an exceptional teammate and a real asset to this community, and I don't see that changing at all. So, thank you. Okay, capital improvement bonds notice of intent for water and sewer projects. Mr. Seisland, we should get the motion on the table, which would be to approve the notice of intent in the resolution as presented. Is there a move by Viner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Caulfield, Mr. Seisland.
Yes, so I do have with me, thank you, members of council, I do have Pat McGow, who's here from Clerk Canfield to discuss further the notice of intent resolution, and then also Mr. Stephen Haydock from Ben Zitsch and Co. to discuss the process.
Welcome to you both.
Yeah, great, thank you. Good evening. We were here a couple of months ago at your September meeting talking about this, and you've obviously been discussing the sewer projects and water projects for many, many months. When we spoke at that September meeting, we talked about moving forward with the next steps in the bond issue, and it's really a two-step process. The first step is what's before you tonight, which is to consider the approval of a notice of intent resolution. This is a procedural step that has the council adopting a resolution indicating to the public its intent to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed $7 million for the water and sewer projects. So this type of bond issue can be issued without a vote of the people, however, it provides a referendum right to the citizens that if the citizens want to have a vote, it would require 10% of the registered voters to submit a petition to the clerk within 45 days of publishing the notice. So what you're approving tonight authorizes the publication of that notice of intent. It also declares that any expenses that you may have can be reimbursed from the bonds if issued. So approved by you tonight, the clerk would take action to publish the notice, and we would wait for that time period to pass, and then we would come back sometime in 2026 with a bond authorization resolution, which would be the second step in the bond process. And I think we're targeting that sometime in early '26 with a bond sale to follow after. So again, this is the first step of the two-step process. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Stephen, if you wanted to talk about timing or anything else, we could do that also.
Nick, did you have anything?
I can talk about the timing a little bit if you would all like to kind of get a little bit about the process. So when Nick and I spoke a few weeks ago, I think the plan is to have bids in December and January for the two different projects between the sewer lining and the water meters. I think based on that, we would plan to have a bond sale sometime in February so we could size the bond issue based on the bids received for the actual project, so you're not borrowing too much, you're not borrowing too little. This notice of intent, once it's published, we'll have the 45-day right of referendum, depending on, I'm trying to remember when the Gross Point News publishes, I think, is it Wednesday? If it goes this Wednesday or next Wednesday, that referendum period should expire at the end of December. Yeah, so that would happen. We would, I would work with Nick over the next few weeks or months to develop the timetable, distribute that to the working group so everyone's on the same page, go through the rating process, prepare the offering document, which is the official statement, and get the bond sale scheduled. And once we hold the bond sale, February timeframe, we can close, and you will have the money about three weeks after that.
Excellent, thank you. Question, and Mr. Viner, I know you've been very much at the table for this, I don't know if you have anything further to...
I mean, we've discussed this at length, but again, this is to accomplish the two major capital improvement projects, the water meters to the city and then four miles of sewer relining. The goal here with this timeline is that all of the water meters should be replaced by the end of this, or rather, next calendar year. And then what's good about that is then we'll have real good aggregate data, complete polling and data that we can then use for the 2027 budget. So yeah, this goes towards the capital program plan and our ends and our goals of reducing water loss and building out the sewer system, so.
Other thoughts, counsel? Mr. Dreever?
After we get through the referendum period, are there any, are there any possibility of snags or hiccups or anything that could slow this down? And if there are, would any sort of snag at that point or something that's going to slow this down, will that hold up our construction schedule, or would construction still be able to get started before the bond sales conclude?
So all the conversations we've had, so let's unpack that. The water meters, everything we're being told by our vendors, we expect that three-quarter, pardon me, I believe I said eight to nine months to change out, so this is completely in line with our timeline. The sewer relining as well, we're not seeing any kind of surprises. In fact, anything right now, we're cautiously optimistic that municipal bond rates may actually be a little bit more favorable over time. And if anything, what we're seeing right now, as you've seen with the last few major infrastructure projects, we've been getting more bids and more favorable bids than we were before. It's a pretty solid contrast to when we were bidding work out two to three years ago. So again, things can change, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but right now everything is lining up with our timeline, and if anything is coming in more favorably, like for example, you see in the bond here, you know, not to exceed $7 million, we don't expect that we need seven. In fact, the most recent bid information we got in with the water meters actually came in slightly better than we had initially budgeted. But again, you build in a buffer to be safe, but right now, everything looks to be on our timeline.
Other questions, your comments?
Well, part of what I was asking, is there, is there any possibility of a hurdle or anything that could likely happen, or I mean, what's your credence that once we get through the referendum, that it's smooth sailing through the rest of the bond?
I don't foresee any issues unless there's issues with construction bids coming in. Once, once we have the bids, unless there's something catastrophic in the bond market or something where we don't think it makes sense to go out to issue, or we can't for some reason, there shouldn't be any hiccups on our...
Okay, thank you. And we do have some flexibility, so obviously the water, we have a set amount of water meters we're going to change, but the sewer relining, we do have some flexibility in that, and that we have, it's the four miles of highest priority sewer. But within that four miles, you know, we have some part, so for example, if bids came in higher, you know, we could adjust. In fact, if bids came in way more favorably and the bond rate came in favorably, we could actually advance some of the other, you know, in-needs sewer projects. So we have some flexibility in how we kind of go through this as opposed to having like one definitive, you know, we're building this exact thing and actually again adjust accordingly depending on how the rates come in, now the timing comes out. So we're well situated for this. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Mr. Coler?
All right, I'm just gonna, this isn't a question for you all, this is for my colleagues here. So we're, we're gonna do the scenario of the notice of intent goes out, okay? I'm gonna make sure we as a body understand that what's gonna happen for all of our fellow neighbors, is they're gonna likely see that, and they're going to then comment on that on the subject of water and sewer. We all know what those comments are going to be. So I'm just gonna make sure that we are recognizing everything that councilmember Viner has talked about, Mayor Protem, Dreever, which you're aware of as well, communications can be so important that we have the basic talking points, city manager. So when we talk about what this is for, right, everything that councilmember Viner just said is the why behind this, right? And this is nothing that's new. We know that, but we need to make sure that our residents are continually told that this is nothing new. We've talked about this ad nauseam for 18 to 24 months, right? And we just gotta show that over and over and over again, just reinforce that right there, because I'm just understanding from a average citizen perspective, it likely will be the first time that they're gonna see, they're gonna see bond, money, water, sewer, high taxes, what this means. We know exactly what the comments are gonna be, we can get it. So anything we can do to get in front of that, right, so we can be responsive to that, not only in the moment, but also being, you know, proactive in there, and once this goes out, what this means, right? Just a constant reminder for all of us, I know we do an above-average job doing that, we're working towards being, you know, I use my Chicago Bears, good, better, best, right? We're trying to be, we're trying, we're good right now, but we wanna be better, we wanna be the best. Like that?
Then you should be a tiger.
So I just wanted to put that out there for everybody right there, so thank you.
The single, the single biggest thing to reiterate is people will see a bond amount, however, that is not paid for. We have the financing in place through the water rates, so while we're issuing a bond, there's nothing translating in any way over to residents' bills. It's already, the financing is in place now, everything is structured through advance.
Yes, and exactly, and that's what we have to say, right? We have to just draw that, this does not mean more money, right? It's all there, and here's where it's coming from. Exactly. We all know that, it's just how we put that out there in a very concise, simple narrative, simple diagrams, it will be, will be helpful for all of us when the pending questions do come.
Well, it's in alignment with our commitment to the community to upgrade our infrastructure so that we don't, again, encounter catastrophic flooding. We protect our tax base and our investment in this community, and we protect not only our health, safety, and welfare, but our property. I mean, that's our primary goal, and these dollars have been entrusted us, to us, by the community, and this is our dutiful utilization of them in the manner in which they have instructed us to, quite frankly. So thank you to all for getting us to this point, this is an important step forward, a responsible one, as we serve as those stewards. So if there aren't any further comments, thank you, Mr. McGow and Mr. Haydock, we can call the roll, are we good? All right. Badler? Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dreever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges? Yes, motion carries. We have approved the resolution as read for capital improvement bonds notice of intent for water and sewer projects. Thank you again. Counsel, next item up is Public Act 152, healthcare. Mr. Seisland, I think we will delay getting a motion on the table, or should we get it on as we normally do, or allow some discussion, some stage setting?
Yeah, let me do some stage setting first, Mayor Hodges, and then kind of get the motion in front of you. So why we're here, or this is called Public Act 152, it's a state law requiring what Michigan municipalities will be doing for public employers regarding healthcare. The city has multiple options. They have the 80-20 provision, which is the 80% of the premium for healthcare coverage, and the employee covers 20%, a hard cap, which is based on a set dollar amount determined by the state, and the opt-out, which is the authority to opt out of PA 152, and that would be that the city, you know, collectively worked on agreements whether with their labor unions, or they decided to opt out and pay what was over the hard cap or 80-20. In the last six years, and as you'll note in my summary, that it's actually gone, it's a little more than 80%, it's actually close to 100% that it's gone up since 2021. Our costs were about 1.1 million, and now they're about 2.4 million. So that's pretty significant in the last couple of years. And if you've seen, especially for those that are reading the Detroit News or Free Press, you know, there's been a lot of talk now since federal government level with, you know, premium costs and how much that's going up. And so I am pleased that we were able to work together with each of our labor union groups, that would be Patrol, that would be our Command, our Dispatch, and TPOAM, which represents the Public Works and the Chronicle of the City. We held multiple meetings together in this very room, also with our healthcare consultants and, you know, providing information, that we were able to come up with a two-year solution for our employees. And so with that being said, I'm gonna be recommending to you, counsel, a little change per my recommendation that you have in here, that I will be asking you to opt out of this agreement for Public Act 152. The labor unions and the city have tentatively agreed to opt out of 2026, and then there would be a 10% cost sharing provision for city employees in 2027 with an alternative healthcare plan also available. And so again, I want to thank profusely the labor unions and working with the employees. We do get our information from Blue Cross in October, so it does not give us a lot of time to find those, and so I do generally appreciate the amount of hard work that went into this, so.
Thank you, city manager Seisland. Now that that recommendation is on the table, I will read a motion for you all to consider, and then we can move into discussion. So that motion is to adopt the resolution to opt out under Public Act 152 for the 2026 medical plan year and to further authorize the city manager to execute such necessary labor agreements and medical plan documents, and for the clerk to file the same, all of which is contingent upon the final execution of letters of understanding with our city unions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Viner, is there a second?
Sure.
Seconded by McMillan, is there discussion?
Are we gonna, if you want?
Yeah.
Very well, okay, welcome, Mr. Kowalski, to the podium. Perhaps you can provide some additional insight that helps explain to the community the fundamental aspects of this agree, of this proposed recommendation.
I'm John Kowalski, I work with Make-Advance, the benefit consultant for the city. And as it relates to this, just wanted to bring a little bit of background as to the most immediate neighbors to Gross Point Park. The other, the other four gross points, all being municipalities in the state of Michigan are subject to PA 152 as well, and are complying with it in various ways. So our motion here to opt out for '26 and charge 10% contributions to 2027 is very much in line, I would say, even ahead of some of your neighbors. The, the direct comps, as we'll call them, are charging hard cap contributions. So the city of Gross Point is charging everything above the hard cap to members who elect to keep their base plan, and then they're offering a second option, similar to what Mr. Seisland has proposed for 2027 here as a no-cost option. In Gross Point Woods, there's a similar situation. They're offering a second plan at no cost, but their primary plan in 2025, they started paying 10% of, '26 will be 15%, and that was all part of a three-year plan to move towards 80-20 contributions. Similarly, in the shores, they have already moved to 80-20 cost sharing to meet their budgetary needs. And the, the other remaining city, Gross Point Farms, they are opting out as they have done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Other questions, thoughts, insights?
It might just be useful to reiterate to residents that we're in a group plan with all of the points, so, well, share, a shared plan among all the points. share a shared plan among all the points. We all have a slightly different kind of orientation, so.
Pretty strong background.
Everyone?
Yes. What councilmember Viner said is is related to the the contract with Blue Cross that is is shared by the five gross points. Um, it's a single contract with Blue Cross allowing the group to be larger and have more flexibility uh, in the way that we purchase and pay for healthcare plans for for all of the employees across all five cities. Uh, without being in this structure, not all five cities would have the current options available to us. Gross Point Park is in the middle as far as as group size uh, of the five. And where we would have a little more flexibility here, um, some cities would have less. And being that we all are under collectively bargained agreements uh, for for each city, it really, it benefits everyone to be part of the the arrangement that we have today um, across the five cities.
Certainly, this is a complex issue, so we appreciate your guidance and direction that you've brought to the table. And I know uh, you know, hopefully the community can see that we find, and I'm assuming we're once we, once we consider this uh, matter, we'll all come to an agreement that this is a way of valuing our exceptional staff. And I think testimony to that fact that it is in excess of our peers while also respecting the tax dollar and making sure we solidify the financial future of the community. So thank you for that. There aren't any further thoughts? We can call the uh, the roll?
Clear? Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Driever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, we have adopted the resolution to opt out of Public Act 152. Thank you again, all. Uh, next item, council, is the utility billing forgiveness of for federal government employees. Uh, the motion would be to approve the plan as presented in our packets. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
By McMillan, seconded by Caulfield. City Manager Seisler, did you want to set the stage at all, or?
Uh, actually, I'm gonna let Mr. Tlepe.
Welcome.
He uh, Matt Matt worked on this and I, you know, probably be glad to Matt to share the ideas.
Good to have you.
Thank you very much, uh, city council residents. Um, what I have in front of us is a temporary forgiveness of utility billing penalties for federal employees affected by the federal government shutdown. So we as a city would like to recognize that the ongoing federal shutdown may cause a temporary financial hardship for federal employees who are currently furloughed or working without pay. Uh, so to support our residents at this time, the city will forego utility billing penalties for verified uh, federal employees affected by the shutdown. So um, the shutdown period started on October first, uh, twenty twenty-five. So from then on through uh, through now or through as long as this will last, all utility billing penalties will be waived. So.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Tlepe? Mr. Coler?
Can you just walk us through the the application and the verification process for our residents?
Yep. So um, so to qualify, simply um, residents at this time must provide the following documentation. A a valid federal employee identification badge or recent pay stub, whenever that last was. Um, and a valid driver's license matching the name on the utility count along to the federal ID. Okay. And it'll all be available at city hall. So everybody can come there and give us a call and happy to help.
I'm grateful to you all for being proactive and bringing this to the table.
Can I ask a question like this?
Yes, please, Mr. Driever.
Um, I hate to get in the weeds on this, but you know, people are married, they've got spouses. The money all goes in one place, but you don't know whose whose name it's gonna be. And it doesn't mean that the family isn't facing a hardship. Uh, can we make it clear that if um, if it's the person living at that house, that they would be allowed for this exemption? Um, so I guess what I'm asking for is discussion and then possibly proposing an amendment to make it so that if it's, you know, you know what I'm saying? That's a couple that uh, if one of the people is a federal employee, they can still qualify even if the spouse isn't the one that is the federal employee and if it's if the water bill's in the spouse's name, that they can still be covered.
Questions?
I think, yeah, I think that's actually fair. Yeah.
Comment.
Okay, so Mr. McMillan and Mr. Caulfield, do you accept that amendment to the motion?
Certainly do.
Yes, absolutely. If they live in the same house, though, I don't know why we have to change the verbiage for that.
Because right now it says it has to match the utility accounts folder. The name on that account. So it could be, it could be in one.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, yeah. So the check, I'll be happy to change it. Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
What do you recommend?
We're good. Just with that, right? Or do we need to?
As long as you're ready to do that.
Sure. So you've got that clerk for the minutes, the amendment that was proposed and accepted by the motion makers?
Can you, can I repeat it? Motion?
Has a motion to to approve utility billing forgiveness, federal government employees as presented with amendment to allow any household member.
Bearing a federal, very federal employee status, whether or not they're the name on the utility account.
So we see any household member?
I think so.
I want to make sure because that's the most.
Yeah.
It's very good.
All right, um, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Driever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes, motion carries. We adopted the um, forgiveness of utility billing for federal employees. Mr. Tlepe, you're on again, uh, regarding the special assessment role sidewalk to winter taxes, council. The motion would be to approve the resolution as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Viner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Caulfield, Mr. Tlepe.
Yes. So pursuant to the city of Gross Point Park Code of Ordinance, section twenty point one two, this allows the city council to approve any unpaid sidewalk repairs to become a special assessment and direct the city treasurer to include a fifteen percent service charge for all outstanding invoices that will then roll onto the tax bill. So this is two of.
Fifty or fifteen?
Fifteen, fifteen.
I announced fifteen in here and I thought I heard you say fifteen. Yeah, that would better be clear. Okay. Great, thank you. Other, are any discussion or dialogue? Yes, Mr. Coler?
I'm just gonna make just a general comment on the topic of special assessments ordinances that we have out there. You know, I have no issue with us going through enforcement mechanisms that we do, right? Um, I just wanted to be cognizant, aware of, as we do this stuff, right, we are going to be impacting our neighbors, right? And we get a lot of comments from our neighbors when they get a notice because of something ruined the aisles, right? Councilmember McMillan? Or something they have with a sidewalk repair recently, right? So just be cognizant of we have these special assessments that we are talking to a human on the other end of that stuff, right? Uh, our neighbors, our residents right there. Um, so I don't want to ever have them feeling like we are just trying to nickel and dime each other, right? Because that just doesn't have a good uh, working collaborative relationship uh, right there. So I'm fine with this stuff as long as we maintain consistent enforcement across all of our ordinances.
The only thing I would add to that is consistent communication too.
Yes, sure.
I had a question about it. So uh, I looked somebody here who was five thousand dollars. Is that all from a sidewalk repair? Because I know they also had a drive, it probably had something to do with their driveway too. Something that's in five thousand.
Corner lot, yeah.
Well, true. I mean, I know we talked about it, um, it being out of pocket for people for scribbling a few hundred bucks. But five thousand dollars, I think for a lot of people, will be quite the bill to get at once. Are there other ways that they can get right with the city? That are painted plans or anything like that that we offer? Or is it, they've gotta pay this five thousand dollars? All at once and we're gonna get cut on this list? Uh, well, as of the the writing of this list, it'd be a five thousand dollars or otherwise they're added to this list. And I I mean, now depending upon certain circumstances, you know, and now we're in year two, going into your degree of sidewalk replacement, uh, we have seen, I know Matt and I have talked about it too, where you'll have several of these corner homes that have more sidewalk than a typical homeowner. Now, maybe we can set some sort of establishment for those because that is an impact generally compared to, you know, you're in a nice home that's, you know, a couple of flags where, you know, you're budding two different versions. So, I mean, that's something we could talk about, something we could look at. Uh, but kind of like Mayor Protem, or uh, everybody said over here too, like, let's just make sure whatever we do, that the city definitely is um, um, following the same exact process. So that's my only thing I need to make sure.
I can't speak for that bill in particular, but realize too, that many homeowners had uh, X X requests that they probably. Yeah. So yes, there was, there was quite a few homes where there was additional work done well beyond what was uh, spec by the city. So that again, I can't speak to that one, but it could be that. Bills may be higher because of that.
Well, I, the only one left, no, I'll put on. So there are payments and credits applied, like, so some people are making regular payments against.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see that it's reflecting in. Oh, it is reflected.
There's one.
But it looks like it's a hash.
Okay.
Other discussion? Okay, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Driever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes, motion carries. We've approved the special assessment role for sidewalks to winter taxes. Thank you all. Next council is the request for a holiday closure uh, of city offices. That motion would be to approve the closure of city hall and DPW on Friday, December twenty-sixth, the two thousand twenty-five, and Friday, January second, two thousand twenty-six, with the affected employees utilizing paid time off or vacation time for the specified days. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Viner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mr. Coler? Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Seisler, do you want to present?
Uh, just as you stated, Mayor Hodges, uh, the calendar this year for both the uh, Christmas and New Year's holiday falls, that it be um, the Christmas Eve, Christmas Day are a Wednesday and Thursday, and then New Year's Eve, Mary's Day is a Wednesday, Thursday. So for most employees or those on the community, you know, you're, you know, having time with friends and family, you're probably not gonna go back to work on a Friday unless you really need to. And so uh, you know, talking amongst my other uh, colleagues and local government, uh, we were looking at, you know, what was opportunities we could do and the easiest solution would be asking for council's blessing and being that the employees use a vacation day uh, to allow for that closure. Because this is a one-time anomaly that you're gonna, until a couple of years tomorrow, you have this.
Discussion?
Makes sense.
All right, clerk, can you please call that roll?
Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Driever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes, motion carries. We've approved the holiday closure request as outlined, which takes us to our last item of new business, which is the sale of the parking lot located at one five zero two zero Perchable. And uh, recommended motion, council, would be to approve the purchase agreement between the city of Gross Point Park and Point Hardware Group LLC for the sale of city-owned parking lot at one five zero two zero Perchable, parcel ID number three nine dash zero zero eight dash zero four dash zero zero one two dash zero zero two as presented, and to authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the sale. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
By Caulfield, seconded by Viner. Mr. Seisler, any discussions?
I guess Mayor Hodges knows the council. Thank you. But uh, uh, so Point Hardware Group, which is the new owners of Point Hardware, who have also brought in uh, Festool uh, tools and Martin Windows uh, to the fronts of Perchable and the amount of work that they've done. Uh, they really are, you know, and if you haven't gone in from hardware too, they still have kept the original theme, but you can see over time they definitely want their expanded business. And just as a historical context, uh, the city-owned parking lot that um, Mr. Kowalski took it in to purchase uh, used to be a part of Point Hardware years ago. So they they demoed it, made it their city parking lot, and now he's wanting to restore it back into uh, what Point Hardware originally was. And so uh, they're looking to, you know, expand their footprint on there with the amount of traffic. Uh, Mr. Kowalski and his Point Hardware Group, uh, you can see from the community mindedness that he's been involved with After Six. I know he's gonna be involved with um, uh, Christmas tree as well. And uh, so he's somebody that wants to, you know, be in the community and invest for a long time. Uh, you will note too, in my summary, that uh, if the city were to keep this parking lot, um, it is in pretty rough shape. You're looking at at least two hundred thousand dollars that otherwise we could use for other areas of the city, alleys, streets, et cetera. And so I would recommend uh, that we do, uh, you know, that council do sign this purchase agreement uh, with him. Uh, there is a ninety-day uh, closure, so I think it's, we'd have, he'd have goes by
February.
February eighth. Yep, thank you. And uh, we do have a earnest money deposit that's non-refundable.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yep, twenty-five hundred dollars. And so I'd be happy to take any other questions.
Purchase price of forty thousand?
Forty thousand. Correct.
Correct.
That's all.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, questions, comments?
I'll be like, I'm gonna make it. I know this is not new to this body. We've discussed this. We've gone through everything as far as a fair value, if it could be developed, what revenue we bring in, which is none uh, the meters right now. So it's not just a street, you know, I mean, we did a lot of due diligence. About fifteen hundred dollars in a year we were collecting. Yeah, spot it. And it'll also, when you develop, it'll increase tax.
Taxable value.
Taxable revenues. Yep.
Thank you for that summary. And with that, Mr. Coler, did you hear again?
Councilmember Caulfield took the words out of my mouth. Yes, with a very quick.
All right, clerk, can you please call that roll?
Councilmember Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Caulfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Driever?
Yes.
Councilmember McMillan?
Yes.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes, motion carries. We have completed the sale of the parking lot to Point Hardware. Thank you to them for being great community members. Which takes us to the final public comment of the evening, which uh, allows our community to come and speak about items that are not on the agenda. We're very glad you're here, anxious to hear what you might have on your mind. Uh, and if you just make yourself known, we'll welcome you to the podium and again, remind you that you have three minutes to use as you wish. City Manager Seisler will handle that timing. We just ask that you share your name as well as your street and then take it away. Mr. Batalero, welcome.
Um, first and foremost, my name's Kurt Batalero. I live at nine six nine Westchester. And before I start, I just want to thank you all for what you're doing. And I know it's not easy. I know you take your business seriously and I couldn't talk about infrastructure, but I appreciate you're doing. And I echo Mr. Coler, Mr. Viner said about, as a, as a resident, right? Just lay it out, right? Say, this is what we need to do. This is part, like you have. If we got funds from the state, the question they'll ask, why aren't we using that to fund some of this? So if you just lay it out, I think the infrastructure is something we gotta obviously do each and every year. So thank you. I just want to say that. And thank you for the relief stuff you did at the park. That was, I thought that was fantastic. So that's not why I'm here. You know, why I'm here is uh, uh, over the last couple of months, uh, like, I live in a side of Westchester where there is uh, alley behind the street, okay? So and I have done some recent repairs to my house, my garage. It had some issues with some of the boards. And I repainted and fixed it up. But the biggest problem I'm having is I'm having problems with rats. And I know it's just not me because I've talked to my immediate neighbors all around me, we all do. And to the point where I've made repairs to my garage and I didn't think I had any food in there besides some bird seed that I discovered, uh, that you know, the rats are eating through the the wood to get into my garage, probably for warmth and everything else. So since October, I've been tracking some rats and I've got nine so far. And I've done, I'm trying to do my part and I, I have tried taking care of, you know, as much as I can. I've asked my neighbors. I called Sean in the city to ask to see what he could do to help me. I know that you have gone through road citations in the alley to keep it up. I I get that. That's all part of it, right? But I'm coming to the city because I I need more help. And I I'm not saying I know all the solutions either. I'll continue to do my part, right? But the thing is, is if I'm catching nine, my neighbors are having a problem. And I, I could go down my whole block. I can, I can guarantee the kind of conversation I'm gonna have. So I I just wanted, I'm gonna bring to your attention, I I'm not saying that you have all the answers tonight. I'm not expecting that. But I just want to at least know, you know, I've got to the point where after I made all the repairs in my garage, I had my carpenter come out and put like a a metal strip on the bottom of the perimeter of my garage to hopefully see if that works, right? I had my carpenter come out and put like a, a metal strip on the bottom of the perimeter of my garage to hopefully see if that works, right? I'm not sure if that will. So uh, so looking for some help, just want to make you aware of it. I, I'm sure if it's on the nine hundred block, i- you know, it could, it could extend out to areas in the city too. So um, open to any ideas you may have. My understanding is too, is we don't have an animal control person in the city anymore. Maybe I'm misinformed with that news, you know, but if that is, if it does true case, then that would obviously overhaul that person we could play if we had that in the city. But I, you know, since we don't, my, my question is, what can we do to resolve the situation?
All right, thank you, Mr. Valerio. We'll make sure you get followed up with on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you're doing. Others who would like to be heard this evening?
Nine six five.
Nine six five.
Good evening. Um, I'm gonna skip the formalities because I have a lot to cram into three minutes. My name is Sarah Doman. I'm a resident of the thirteen hundred block of Lake Point. I'm here on behalf of myself and my neighbors. Several of us have received invoices for trimming that was done in our, in the alleys behind our houses. There's a lot of things about these invoices that are concerning. First of all, some of the residents never even received notice of an alleged violation. The notice that I received was completely vague and unspecific and uh, said, please don't hesitate to call me. Well, I called five or six times over the course of a month to try to receive some clarity about what the issue was. Because the notice just listed the ordinance. It didn't say where any um, overgrowth was. Um, and I didn't know if it was my front yard, my alley. My alley was in pretty good shape at the time. And nobody called me back. And finally, someone just came and did some trimming. And I didn't receive a bill for three months. So after they did the trimming, I figured it was such a small job, they probably weren't gonna bill me for it. Because I could have done the work myself in about twenty minutes. Um, I emailed photographs to all of you, so you already know what my alley looked like. I believe my neighbors have done the same. The invoice I received was very concerning as well. It was not itemized. I don't know how much time this person spent. I've never heard of this contractor. They're not from Gross Point. Their registered address is in Warren. There are dozens of landscaping contractors in Gross Point Park, several of whom have applied to do work for the city and were denied. So I'd like to know, was there an RFP, how this person was chosen? Um, their bills were outrageous. Mine was five hundred dollars. Others were six hundred dollars. Um, they didn't say how much time they spent. Um, it was pointed out to me by a landscaping contractor that many of them have a minimum bid or a minimum charge. And if this person's minimum charge was five hundred dollars, they should have billed a minimum charge for the whole block, not for each individual resident. Um, because the whole block should have been done as one job. Um, we've also approved a bond and village where we're paying for the city to do improvements to the alley, which was one of the specific portions of that village. Um, and instead of the city doing their part, our alley is crumbling. Uh, the pavement is falling apart and they're punishing us by coming and trimming basically nonexistent brush um, that isn't really in anyone's way and then billing us outrageous amounts for it. Um, so um, ideally, we'd like to have a response from the council during the council comment portion of this meeting, but if that's not possible, um, then we would like the due date to be extended until such time as we're able to receive individualized responses.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Doman.
Thank you.
And we do have it all. We very much appreciate you sending the to-do's. We know how to get you. Yes.
I know, I'm with her. Can I? Do I have a minute? Do I get my print? Um, I probably won't take up three minutes because I'm not a public speaker. Um, I, everything she said, I agree exactly the same way. I'm Lori, Lori Oaks, thirteen fifty-six Lake Point. Um, yeah, when I got the invoice, I was in shock. I was like, I received a letter, same thing. I didn't understand. It was like a basic, every year we get a letter stating about um, the ordinances and the things that need to be, but nothing has ever been enforced. And I never, just thought it was always weeds and brush and I would always make sure I cut that up. And nobody ever got back with me, ever. And my trees kind of look pretty in the alley. And I thought you guys liked them. I just, for whatever reason, nobody ever said to me that your trees need to be trimmed. So when I got the invoice, even with the letter that we got, it wasn't clear. It didn't actually state. And this is my biggest problem right here. It didn't state that every, that this specific year, we are enforcing this. Like, and it, and it didn't state trees. It didn't state your trees need to be trimmed. It's like brush and trimmings. But that's every year. So what made this year special? And then how was I supposed to know that this year was special? Um, and then I, again, I could have, it, the pictures look worse on my property, I think. But if you, because of the types of trees they are, there's actually only five cuts. I have trimmed many trees in my life. Boom, 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 boom. You have a chipper, like you guys would. Boom, boom, boom. You're done in ten minutes. So, yeah, and a five hundred dollar bill, um, which I could have done myself. And then my other thing that I want to add, which is a little separate from this, is when I had the water line worked on on my property, because I had a water leak, they came out and they drilled, they did everything. They did a great job last year. The city was awesome. Thank you so much. Um, but they never came back to fix my property. So I've been trying, calling, 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 and never got a response. Um, so, and I did, and I should go back and say that I also did call about the other bill, but I, I did not get a call back. But that's, okay, now I'm, as you can tell, I'm not a public speaker.
You're actually doing great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, um, so because, so I talked to the guys that were doing the property work over on Beacons Field, and they're the ones that actually put me on the list and they came and did it a couple of weeks ago. But when they did it, unfortunately, when they, last year when they had drilled under to do the line work, the sidewalk, the blocks are in perfect shape. There's no cracks in the two blocks, but they went like this. And then when they came out to do the, the grass, they never shoved the dirt back under to lift the sidewalks up. So now my sidewalks are like this. And then the other ones by a big tree, which is already broken. I've already replaced it several times and it's broken again and it's cracked up and it's, yeah. I just, thank you.
So, what was your address, please?
Thirteen fifty-six Lake Point. So, City Manager, if you could maybe give council a report by the end of the week on the status of these addresses and any others that might be in question and then give solutions, please?
Yeah.
Thank you for taking the time tonight. You make this better. Anybody else who'd like to be heard tonight?
Sure, clear up. Perhaps my public speaking skills yet again. Hey, Stephen Nguyen, nine six five Pemberton. I uh, hopefully won't take three minutes. If I do, I'll be impressed with even myself. Um, a, a week or so ago, I put on a GPP community page on our Facebook group, just to post around the impact of government shutdown, SNAP benefits, the impact of SNAP disruptions for our community. Because I think it was easy for me, just sort of sitting at home to think, okay, well, these types of benefits, these types of disruptions, Gross Point Park, pretty affluent community, not necessarily a major problem for us. Definitely a bigger problem for Detroit. And, and by all means, it is. And other communities around the state. I was just surprised, looking at some of like the American Community Survey data, understanding, you know, about almost five percent of Gross Point uh, Park residents' households benefit from SNAP. And so that's just like five percent seems like a low percent. That's one in twenty of our neighbors, right? So just thinking about how many people live on a city block or something like that, you know, one of your neighbors might be on SNAP benefits. And I think we live in a community where it's not easy to really talk about that, especially if you are in a more affluent community. Probably not gonna bring that up to your neighbors. Um, but it was just the type of thing where I saw, and I saw today, by the way, the, the state of Michigan decided to issue full benefits to everybody. So those will go out over the next forty-eight hours or so. I just thought the city of Detroit sort of came through in other cities in southeast Michigan, had pretty strong responses that said, hey, you know, SNAP benefits being disrupted, different efforts around food pantries, different efforts around things like that to just, as a, as a city to show up and represent the need there. It's just important, I wanted to mention that there is a bit of a need in Gross Point Park. It's not a huge need. It's not our number one issue, probably. Think we could just consider as these types of impacts come out, I actually loved hearing the, you know, on the agenda item just around utility bill forgiveness. There are probably other community members who could use that type of assistance at a time like this. But luckily their uh, SNAP, their EBT cards are get, get uh, filled in the next forty-eight hours or so. And so maybe not a major issue, assuming the government shutdown comes to an end. Thanks for the time.
Sorry, you folks, students, excellent. Anybody else? All right, we will, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You're in under the wire. Welcome.
Well, hello. Uh, I've been here since I had a ticket.
Did you just get released or something?
Yeah, Joe Sharbo is very kind with me, actually. Quite kind. Um, anyway, my name's Thomas Baumgartner. Uh, I live over at thirteen oh eight Somerset. And I'm a little surprised nobody's talking about water. No water? All right, let's talk about water just for a moment. Uh, we know the bills have gone up. We know that we live, well, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, great job to the council. I've lived here for twenty-five years and I've watched Gross Point Park basically kind of like slide a little bit and then really come back with really good investments. And the community has really come together and we seem to be on a trajectory of growth and, and enterprise. And I, I appreciate the, the creative problem solving you have to have in an older community, especially for capital improvements. Um, which brings me to my question. And uh, so I realize that there's gonna be capital improvements and you have to make them because it's, it's an older system. But what I see that's different in Gross Point Park versus all the other municipalities I've looked at, not only look at six, and from a statistical point of view, you know, that you can look at a sample size of six, you get about ninety-five percent confidence that what you're seeing is probably what's happening in the rest of the population. What I'm seeing is that these communities roll their water and sewer capital investments into usage. And why is that important? Because right now, we use it as a fixed cost. So as, as this gentleman was mentioning, there is about five percent, probably more, um, if you will, vulnerable citizens or rep, uh, residents who have a difficult time paying their water bill and they don't use much water. But still, they gotta come up with two or three C notes every cycle. They don't use much. So it's, it's kind of a disadvantage for the people who can least afford it. So I wonder if you could have something a little more equitable in how you do your capital funding. And you can put a margin in there so you don't, you know, come short at the end of the year. But that's what the other municipalities did that I talked to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Work that you did and bring it to the table. All right, anybody else? All right, we will close the final public comment of the evening. Uh, and that council brings us to council comment. And I open the floor. Whoever would like to be heard this evening. Mr. McMillan?
Just like to congratulate uh, Councilman Gleason and, and looking forward to working with them.
And his proud family who's in the audience.
Yes.
Be very well behaved, I might add.
And also, Matt Nick for his work and your team and PA one fifty-two. It's a lot of work, jammed into a month and a half. And uh, the second, the last thing is, um, as I read your report, the Michigan road revenue will have a positive difference of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So my, my ask is for something to think about is, we have the different districts that we go through, District one, two, three, four, five for sidewalk repair. But we do have some districts that are still three years old. Can we use some of this money to go back to those areas that are real, uh, you know, deemed real problematic and, and take care of those so we don't wait three years to do something, let's say on Pemberton, that has a, you know, a three-inch gap. So let's, I'm looking at that money thinking, maybe we can do something to solve that, for you to consider. That's really the end of my comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember McMillan. Mr. Viner?
I want to again, uh, point out to residents that in the consent agenda, we now have itemized reports from all the different departments in the city. I think it's a very good resource for everybody. Again, it breaks it down in one to two pages. It's something that I really love seeing. I think it makes the communication and gives people better updates in terms of what the city's doing. So it's great. And again, I think we want to encourage residents to take a look at it. Uh, obviously, we had a pretty, you know, freak storm. Uh, nobody saw this from out of snow and everything coming in. And so I commend the uh, Public Works Department jumped on it. Still, residents, please be very careful. Um, there's quite a flash freeze. So I mean, they're doing their best to get out there and salt everything, but again, it came quickly. Uh, but to reiterate to residents, if you go to Windmill Park, obviously, we have the big, you know, berm of salt uh, that is available to residents. Because again, we want, I want to be safe, so please be aware of that. Um, finally, I do want to say, uh, thank you, uh, for the election. Uh, Clerk Dowler did an excellent job. Thank you for everybody who, uh, supported us. And I'm looking forward to the uh, the new term with everybody up here. So, okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Viner.
So, um, first off, uh, you know, beautification, it's a quiet time of the year for us, except for one notable thing, which is that we will be passing, uh, or we will be presenting the beautification awards um, in November thirteenth at the Tompkins Center. I mean, you'll find more details about that on the website. You'll have a calendar. Um, really excited about that. That's kind of the thing that, that and uh, the Arbor Day posters, I think are two of the biggest things that uh, the Beautification Commission gets really excited about and recognizes people in our community. Um, that being said, I also wanted to touch on what you said about the uh, the um, the updates that go out. Um, I strongly suggest people look at it. I was very pleased reading those. I don't know if that's coming from you, Nick, and, and Aspen Department has to do that, but it's absolutely incredible. I think it's gonna be great for residents to see what's going on. It's gonna continue moving forward. Awesome. Um, and then to the clerk, your team and all the election volunteers, um, my hat's off to you guys. I know it's kind of like uh, Super Bowl Sunday, whenever we have an election. And this, in, in, in particular, you know, we, uh, on these odd years, you know, people gotta know that um, council packet time is a big deal for the clerk. And so for her to put this together, put the team together and all these things, and then on top of that, uh, coming right out of the election, um, it's a lot of work for her and everybody. And uh, and it goes noticed. And I talked to a few of the people at the polls and they said that, uh, they said everything was going really well. And uh, I didn't, I didn't want to bother you there because I figured you're probably putting out a fire somewhere, but they said, no, everything is going well. So my hat's off to you guys, um, for all of that. And then on another note, you know, the, the issues about the um, about the alleys and these bills, um, Nick, I, I've seen there, Seisland, we gotta follow up with you on this stuff. Um, because uh, and I just want to put on record that, you know, we're gonna get this straightened out. But it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem fair. It doesn't seem equitable. I know that if I got a bill for what I saw in those pictures, um, it was five hundred dollars, I'd be very upset about it. And I can see why other people are as well. So look forward to getting to the bottom of that with you. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
The side of the table, anybody?
All right, I've got six, six things today. So, and I got, I'm gonna sandwich in the middle with some positive there. But I'm gonna continue what Mayor Pro Tem Draper talked about there, uh, especially with the bills. You know, one thing, my biggest, um, just concern I'm hearing is, uh, and I think Sarah said in her comment, like the process, right? What I, I'm just concerned that we didn't follow the proper process, the proper notice right there. And I think, you know, I'm not gonna, that's concerning to me as a compliance professional. I, I hear that and all of a sudden I cringe a little bit right there. So if we didn't follow the process, I'm worried about liability there. And of course, we, we all saw the pictures. You know, I've got, uh, because I'm a suburban homeowner now, right? We've all got those clippers now that we can do that work on our end. So it's obviously, I appreciate that Mayor Pro Tem is gonna talk more about that. I think it's definitely worth having more conversation. Um, and we'll encourage all our neighbors to please, uh, I'm sure the thirty-hundred block of Lake Point, I'm sure you have a group uh, that you can talk to and you can knock on doors, send text messages. Obviously, we are neighbors. Please, thank you for coming. Uh, give us more of that information here. And I, and I know that Mayor Pro Tem, I know City Manager, will, will take this up seriously on our end. Um, next one is leaf pickup. I know with the storm, uh, as Councilman Rea talked about, and we had some equipment notices put out as far as the malfunction. We backed up in operational, I saw. Uh, Tom Johnny said that was gonna be today. I just wasn't sure with the storm, if there was any impact on that.
All right, it should be, it should have been back up today, actually, but yeah, so.
They were being picked up too, yeah.
Good, good. I, I just know because when I drove to, you know, this morning, I, the snow was covering all the leaves. I was not sure, you know.
They were gonna win a little bit for it to go and then they picked up, yeah.
All right, uh, my next one is the rats. Um, you know, I appreciate Kurt's comment. Um, that's definitely nothing new to municipalities, right? So I'm sure there's plenty of resource out there. And I, I bet you if we did some research, we could find some success stories, uh, things that we may want to bring to this council that we can emulate uh, for some short-term, medium-term, even long-term solutions that are out there. Um, I'd love to see that, uh, at least uh, in the future, uh, on our new business item in the future, right? Maybe we do some research, find out what is working elsewhere. Right here back from our neighbors as far as what they find out, uh, keep that going. Because I know it's not a new problem, especially for Gross Point Park. Been around for a lot of years, especially as we get closer to our business districts there. Uh, but definitely I know there's solutions out there that others have probably already figured out, um, that we can definitely put in place here on our end. All right, my sandwich in the middle now with the good news, thanks to our, our city clerk here. Uh, we have on November nineteenth, and I volunteered, not only Mayor Pro Tem Draper, but our newest council member is gonna meet my daughter and her fellow Daisies here, uh, November nineteenth, to get a tour, uh, to get their Daisy Democracy for Daisies badges. is gonna meet my daughter and her fellow daisies here, uh, November 19th to get a tour, uh, to get their Daisy Democracy for Daisies badges on November 19th. So, uh, I did nothing else but just make the introduction of the girls got troop leaders for our city clerk. And I got out of their way. And now we have all sorts of things that are showing up every day at my house here at City Hall of all these cool little goodies that the girls are gonna get. I know my daughter's excited. Her fellow daisies are excited. So thank you for your work on that. Thank you for attending. Thank you for being there and my absence on the 19th. Anybody here is allowed, uh, encouraged to attend. I, I know maybe that you can even your family. I know the 19th.
What time is it?
Um, they, six o'clock, six o'clock. Five thirty to seven now. So we've got 30 minutes of five thirty to seven on the 19th. So that's the positive fun. Yes, cute little badge. Um, another thing that I heard from some public comments, I know this is a repeated thing. Um, it's, it also makes me cringe a little bit is the call, but didn't get a return phone call, right? That's a, a theme we continue to have here. I think about it, my state agency, um, we, and I go, we have, of course, much more advanced technology. Uh, we use a company called InContact. Every phone call we receive, we receive thousands a day, right? And we can know the resolution of that based on other linking of the systems. It's very complex. I get that, right? But our goal is very simple, is that to make sure if someone calls my agency, right, that they're gonna get what we call resolution, right? I mean, they're not, they're not always necessarily happy with the answer they get, but at least they got resolution, right? So I'd like to see us really put some emphasis on that, um, to all of our department heads, right? I know we have, you know, different lines that are out there, but maybe it's something we should talk about on our community engagement committee as well. Just, just to try to be better as far as putting out some solutions out there to help our city staff, right, uh, be, um, not having to hear the comments or neighbors that they were calling, but never heard back, right? That's just not good customer service. I know we strive to be good, uh, you know, agents and good customer service representatives there on our end. So I just focus on that. My last thing, um, and I'm cognizant of this now, having my, uh, my fourth grader being on the safety patrol team, uh, nowadays is the safe routes to school. Uh, and I noticed, uh, you know, now you see, and I think Council, or Mayor Pro Tem Draver, excuse me, uh, where we, we used to live there, right on Kirk's Wall, you, you see now all these kind of like holes, right? Of like where there's perhaps unsafe crossings, right? It makes you nervous as a parent seeing that stuff. So I'm curious to imagine like, um, I had a resident reach out to me as well. Just remind me what the, what the best process is to have a discussion, uh, with our director of public safety, I'm assuming. Is there, is there a best first place to start just to kind of, hey, here's what we're seeing. What, what does that, what does that look like? What's, what's the best place to start?
Uh, so the best place to start would be to email publicsafety@grosspointpark.org. And so that goes to our, um, public safety office assistance, Chief Bottic also gets a copy, so he can take a look in your year. That would be the first place I'd suggest that concern. Uh, come up to City Hall, call the public safety non-emergency line and, you know, we'll let that over. All right. That's it.
Hey, but pictures.
Yeah, pictures.
Pictures, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I had the right first step, just to have the contact pictures, notice, right? I know there's much more that goes beyond that there, but, um,
Yeah.
wanted to bring that up there. And so I will pass that along. Thank you.
Yeah. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan.
And following, uh, Councilmember Bowler, I just wanted to say thank you to this community for your trust and the opportunity to serve each and every one of you. It is a gift and a privilege to be up here. And I am beyond excited. I love this community. I grew up here. My grandparents grew up here in the 60s. And my great-grandfather, when my grandmother was young, was on the school board and the mayor for a small town. And when I was a kid, my dad was the, uh, on the board for my preschool. My grandparents did 40 years of service through the leadership of St. Clair. My mom was the Reverend President. So it is an honor to be able to continue in that tradition of service above self and just to be up here tonight. But I also wanna say thank you to all of my following council members as well as the administration for the assistance in getting ready for tonight and for wonderful first meeting. And for Bridget and your team, it was a 23-hour day for me and election day. I have no idea how long it was for you. You, I can't compliment you and your staff enough. You did an amazing job. But also in our packets, in the, in the consent agenda, you, uh, brought up in your, uh, apartment report, your recognition through the sunlight award. And I just wanted to highlight that you worked so hard to hold yourself up to that standard and excel anyone's expectations. And you're an incredible team, but that speaks to your leadership. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And you know what? Councilmember Patrick, glad you're here. You did a peck of a job.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it. And yes, clerk, excellent. Don't wanna repeat it. Uh, hats off to you. It's definitely,
it's all your pro in elections. Good job.
You know, a couple of things, just our decisions up here must always be guided what's best for our residents, not necessarily by politics or political maneuvering. And regardless of any change of appointment to the city or any committees that we're gonna probably go through, my commitment still stands to this city as a waiver. I will continue to hold both this elected body and our administration to the highest standards of service and integrity. And I will not hesitate to call out when those actions fall short of what residents deserve. Uh, as we have said, and I'll mimic, I don't wanna be a dead horse, but it's this constant non-responsive or lack of response. And I think we really need to focus on that. And I look forward to working collaboratively with everybody up here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coffield. Um, gosh, you've all covered, uh, much of what I had on my list as well. I think the only thing we didn't hit on with the clerk is that we were fifth in the tri-county area for voter turnout. So on top of the many awards and accolades, we can add that one as well. So thank you, Clerk Bowler, to you and your team for all that you did. Um, the, let's see, just, uh, I also would like to thank the Kelly Firm and, um, Morgan McAtami. Uh, she has left the firm, uh, has sat in that seat, uh, often and really represented us well and guided us well. And, uh, we're very excited for her new opportunity, but certainly sad to have lost that talent. But of course, she comes from a strong bench of talent with the Kelly Firm. So Nancy, thank you for being here and please give Morgan our, our best regards. Uh, just a couple of good news things. One, Marge is, is gonna stay. Yes, thank you to the DePree family for their many, uh, many years of ownership there. And thank you to Charlie Brown, uh, of 31, seller 313 fame for taking on the mantle and making sure that the wonderful tradition of Marge stays viable. And then two, just to remind everybody that the Santa Claus parade put on by the Gross Point Chamber will take place on Friday after Thanksgiving. That's certainly a wonderful show of community. Uh, I will be, you all are welcome to march in that parade. So please let me know if you want those details. The junior mayor will also be marching. It's a lot of fun to just see the community come out in, in force. And then also on that same note, we will be convening a tree lighting along with our business association, who Mr. Viner works very closely with on our behalf, uh, the evening of Friday, November 29th. So details are coming, but I can assure you each year it continues to get better and better, huh?
Friday and Saturday.
It's Saturday. Did I say Friday? Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Compliance and, uh, but yeah, so the 28th is Friday. That's the parade. The 29th is Saturday. And that's the wonderful tree lighting where we'll bring everybody to our beautiful Gross Point Park to kick off the holidays. And other than that, I have nothing further, except to thank my great team, uh, for a great meeting. And we'll call for a, a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by McMillan for adjournment at 8:47. Clerk?
Councilmember Bowler?
Yes.
Councilmember Gleason?
Yes.
Councilmember Coffield?
Yes.
Councilmember Viner?
Yes.
Senator Tim Draver?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Very much.
Yes, motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I know.
Well, you couldn't even afford the one.